Say your. Long would you please lead us? Victor would you lead us some prayer, please? Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day you've allowed us to be here today. We thank you for everything you're doing in the city of Montevista. Holy Spirit, we ask for your guidance and your perfect will and my needs be created. Sarah, long, please.
Councilor Howard.
Here.
Councilor Renz. Councilor Watson.
Here.
Mayor Becker. Mayor Potem Sigala.
You're doing fine, Sarah.
Thank you.
Sir, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir, I don't believe so.
Yes, you did.
We do with the purchase of the sale. Okay, so. There is going to be a modification of the resolutions for the purchase and sale agreements. For sale of real estate located within Sky High Park complex. So.
So moved. What are we doing?
So we're adding the, it wasn't listed on the agenda, so we're adding the, the purchase and sale agreement.
So go under contracts, agreements and leases, is that what we're talking?
We're gonna put it underneath. Well, yeah, I guess that makes more sense, but we're just gonna run it after you guys listen to everything and do it under the resolutions.
Where do you want it?
Under J one.
J one, under, so we'll have J two?
Yeah.
Also the easement and incentive.
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded, modified the agenda to add J two regards to the hotel.
Correct. We also need to add, you guys passed the. Incentive agreement back in December. A year ago. Nine and a half ago, and so you now have to pass the actual economic development incentive agreement.
Is that all part of this?
Yes. So that would be J three.
Well, we got one lot, well, okay, we'll add it in there. We'll do one, we'd better do one at a time since I'm at the waist. So.
Yeah.
And we're discussion. Sarah, for the. We're going to add the hotel contract under J two.
And then we need the easement agreement.
The easement?
Easement agreement for ingress and egress.
On J two, J three, Dave, sir, get that all in there.
Okay, so J two and J three, is that my understanding?
J three will be next.
Okay.
Cause we already moved in second and J two.
And so J. Three, okay. Sorry.
Excellent.
A little bit, sorry.
I'm sorry.
So you need to call from the vote on. Modification for J two?
Mm hmm, okay.
All right, so. Motion carries to. Yeah. This is my first time doing this by myself, by boss, out of town, okay, you're doing good. Okay, Councilor Howard.
Motion to add J two, yes.
Okay. Councilor Renz.
Yes.
Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sigala.
Aye.
And Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve modification of. J three.
J two.
J two. Okay. Oh, man. Okay.
Now we're looking for a motion for modification of J three.
Okay.
As what Gigi said.
See, what he said, what you just.
Easement agreement for ingress and egress.
Okay.
Somebody seconded. Been moved and seconded for modification to agenda to add G three. J three? Is there any more discussion? Sarah, call for the vote, please.
Councilor Howard.
Yes.
Councilor Renz.
Yes.
Councilor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sigala.
Aye.
And Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve modification of the agenda. Of J two and J three.
Okay.
So the purchase and sale agreement and then the. Easement as well.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, now we need motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, Councilor Howard.
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there more discussion? Hey, now, sir.
Councilor Howard.
Yes.
Councilor Renz.
Yes.
Councilor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sigala.
Aye.
And Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve modification of the consent agenda. Okay. All right. That was what I was supposed to do, right?
And the consent agenda was approved for the minutes or any meeting from May first, twenty twenty five and approval of council payable. Uh, citizen comments, special presentations. Citizen comments, city council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes, council will not take action the same meeting. Anybody? Any takers? Got something to say, Robbie? Judy? Right, Cheryl, no? Nobody? Okay. Scheduled appearances. Now, in order to be on this portion of the agenda, you have to fill out appropriate paperwork with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Jeff Williamson, legal counsel, and Jordan Dimick with water engineer. Ruling of the ref. Referee case, nobody? Boy, that's a lot of stuff. Step on up there.
Thank you, it is a lot of stuff, and we're trying to be efficient. Nice to see all of you, my name is Jeff Williamson, uh, water council for the city. And Jordan is here, Jordan Dimick from SGM, um, he serves as technical consultant on water rights matters. Bringing ahead a presentation. Essentially, the, the, the main reason we're here now tonight is that on April first, the water court entered a decree, a final decree. In the city's water rights application that was filed back in twenty sixteen. This is good news for the city, wanted to just give you guys. Fairly high level overview as to what that means. Um, and then talk about, uh, next steps going forward, and then there's a, a. Specific piece of next steps, uh, we've got a one-year lease of water to the Rio Grande Water Conservation District for your, uh, approval. You know, I'll get to that kind of at the end as a, as a separate piece. Done some of this before, I just wanna kind of pull us back into the universe that we're talking about. Water rates in general, this is, we're talking about water quantity. Delivery of water into the city's treatment system for distribution to residents, businesses and customers. Uh, this is all regulated by the Division of Water Resources. Craig Cotton is the division engineer here in the valley, and he's overseen by Jason Olman in Denver, who's the state engineer. And water rights are decreed by the water court, uh, now Elmosa. By the judge and water referee. So that's, that's the world we're in, and especially here in the valley, uh, we're operating under the. Division three groundwater rules, which were. By whom approved in twenty nineteen, um, after being proposed in twenty fifteen. And these rules really were, uh. Are, are a framework. For remedying the long-term depletions to the aquifers in the valley. That have occurred over, over decades of time. And I'm not gonna get into the weeds on all of the pieces of the rules, cause there are a lot of them. But I bring it up now because that was the impetus for the reason that we filed. Uh, this water court case in twenty sixteen is because these rules were implementing new requirements. And new, a new technical basis and technical model to use for figuring out your well depletions. And there were really, the, the rules provide a few avenues to do that. Um, an augmentation plan is what we just obtained, decreed by the water court. Uh, you can also comply with the rules on a temporary basis with an SWSP or substitute water supply plan. The city has had one of those in place for the last four years, and Jordan will talk. A little bit about that, and you can also comply with the rules by entering into contractual agreements. With the Rio Grande Water Conservation District or its sub-districts. Or other water users, basically. There's some flexibility there to figure out, you know, what are the, the best ways for the city to meet its depletion obligations. So what are we talking about? We're talking about depletions. The map doesn't show up real well, but really I'm just highlighting that the city's water, water supply, it comes from eight wells. And so all of those wells have depletions. Five of them are in, uh, what we call confined aquifer, there's different requirements for replacing those depletions, and then three. Are in confined aquifer. And those, uh, so you, you pump the well and it depletes the aquifer, and those depletions hit, uh, streams and hit, hit the Rio Grande, they also hit. Uh, minus as well, also deplete, uh, the Kaus, uh, Le Lahara. You can, uh, see on that map, you know, there's different areas where this has an impact. So. Uh, when we go to water court, the whole, the whole purpose is to, to say to the court. We're operating these wells, this is where our depletions are impacting the valley. And here's what we're gonna do to remedy that in compliance with the rules. That's why Jordan and his, uh, team are critical, cause you can see that this gets really technical, uh, real, really fast. Um, so we, we filed the case, uh, in twenty sixteen shortly after the rules were proposed. And there are really three parts of it, and I'll talk about each of those. First part was a change of water rights, a change of some ditch shares that Montevista has owned. To change those so that, in addition to being used for irrigation. It could be used for augmentation and the replacement of all depletions. To facilitate that, we also proposed exchanges of water rights. Uh, or sorry, exchanges of water that would allow us to take those ditch rights instead of at their historical headgates. To store them in Rio Grande Reservoir upstream. And release them to replace depletions to the Rio Grande. And then the final piece is the plan for augmentation, which just ties all of this together and explains, um, how we're gonna. Uh, replace the depletions from the city's wells. The process is long for several reasons, first of all, water court processes are always long because there's always. Almost always a technical component. And when you file an application. Any other water user can file, it's called a statement of opposition. And they may actually oppose what you're doing, they may just wanna get more technical information about what you're doing. So we had, uh, fairly significant list of opposers, um, in, in Montevista's case. Uh, most of these folks filed statements of opposition at the beginning of the case, although I wanted to note that the state and division engineers. And Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Both, uh, entered the case relatively late in the game, I think the, the state engineer didn't file a statement of opposition until late twenty twenty. Um. In Colorado Parks and Wildlife, not until twenty twenty three. And of course, those entities had some, you know, questions and concerns, so it, the process is essentially a back and forth. Trying to understand what concerns these folks have with what we're trying to do, and trying to address those concerns. I'm just gonna talk about, uh, briefly each of the, the pieces of, of the case and that are now in the decree. So the, the ditch water rights that we changed in this case are interest held by Montevista in the Anderson Ditch. Then the second one is, it's a water right that was actually decreed to the McDonald Ditch, but has historically been diverted through the Prairie Ditch. Uh, which diverts kind of on the, the north side of town. Um. As I mentioned, we, the main reason we're changing them from irrigation use is so that we can use them to replace well depletions. But the decree also provides some flexibility so that if needed in the future, this water could be diverted and used. In Montevista's, uh, distribution system, potable system. The, uh, the thing to know about the, the decree change of these water rights is that. You end up, you're limited to the historical consumptive use of the water rate, so. The court looks at, uh, and Jordan analyzed. You know, how have these water rates been used for irrigation, what percentage of that water is consumed by the crops versus what percentage returned to the river? Uh, and really, you're, you're, we're able to use now that consumptive portion for replacement and other uses. There are limits on the rate and volume of, of this water that we can account for, uh, but as Jordan will explain, it's. It's in an amount that far exceeds what we need to replace well depletions, so there's a nice buffer there. Uh, the exchange rights, as I mentioned, uh, really, the, the key. Piece of the exchange is, is it allows the city to store water in Rio Grande Reservoir. That's important because then we can release that water slowly, uh, to replace non-irrigation season depletions. In other words, the, the ditch rights, because their irrigation rights were historically only allowed to be diverted during the irrigation season. But by changing those for storage, gives us the flexibility to replace them to the river when, when needed. We have operated the exchange of the Anderson ditch rights under the substitute water supply plan, the temporary approval we've had for the last few years. So a portion of that has been made absolute. The remaining amount and the exchange of the Prairie Ditch right is still conditional, which means. We haven't actually operated it yet, it's a right operated in the future. And the reason I point that out is because, uh, the water court has, uh, diligence. Application requirement, every six years you have to go back to water court. To say, we still have this conditional right, we still have an intent to use it. And here are some things we've done to show you, Judge, that we are going to use it in the future. It's to keep people from just acquiring water rights and sitting on them, not doing anything with them. It's usually not a big hurdle for a municipality, because a municipality is always working on its water system. Its water rights, and you have an obligation to plan for the future, uh, but I just pointed out because in six years' time, there will be. A water court application, but it will be much simpler than what we just went through. And. Finally, the plan for augmentation, um. A couple, just a few specifics I wanted to point out, I've already talked about it, uh, the exchange of water to river and reservoir. We also, uh, the city entered into, and is still under contract with sub-district number two. And, uh, to replace well depletions from our unconfined wells, those are the three wells. That are currently used for, uh, park irrigation. And then, uh, we also have a contract with sub-district number six. To replace depletions caused by our, uh, confined wells. And those are the, the confined aquifer depletions, those are the ones that. Impact some of the, the stream segments, streams further south, uh, not the main stemming of Rio Grande. Uh, but the K, Harris and Lahara. The decree also, uh, gives the city to add other sources in the future, so again, this is kind of, um. Mix and matches in the right term, but it's, it's a combination of sources that, that we can use for. Replacement if we need to change that up in the future with different contracts, the decree, uh, lets us do that. Before I get to next steps, Jordan, do you wanna just speak to, um. Substitute water supply plan and kind of what we've been doing in the real world?
You bet. Thank you for having us tonight, um. The substitute water supply plan that Jeff mentioned allows for temporary authorization, so in twenty twenty one. We started exchanging the Anderson Ditch up to Rio Grande Reservoir. Um, for that kind of initial runs, actually, Council Renz, you re- recommended the subsequent year, we consider. Coordinating with Rio Grande Water Conservation District, that water that could be used. Uh, for replacement use was leased to Rio Grande Water Conservation District, so that helped the community also generated some income. Uh, for the city, and we've been repeating that, um. One of the things we're gonna talk about tonight is kind of the lease that we're gonna, uh, have you look at this year, but, um. The long-term plan is, you know, since twenty twenty, we've been able to work with the ditch company, Division of Water Resource. And to work out the bugs of the system, get the accounting practice, and really have kind of a streamlined system for the city. Uh, to support Rob and his team with how do we administer this and work it to kind of minimize the amount of work needed. So, um, plan going forward, basically, the, the three wells, Jeff mentioned, the unconfined wells. Um, right now, only one is in use, it's at Chapman Park, the depletions associated with that are a little less than ten percent. Of the amount of irrigation water rights changing to the Anderson. Uh, well, six and seven have been offline for a couple of different reasons, we've supported the city and. Getting change decree on their location and getting those, uh, new permits issued. Um, once those come online and you look at the golf course and the school and the park irrigation. It's gonna be about eighty percent roughly, uh, of the overall, um, unconfined well depletions. So as Jeff said, there's currently a big buffer that could be leased to Rio Grande Water Conservation District, but going forward. The city really has solid footing for growth and to offset the depletions and still have a little bit of buffer. In the future, uh, in addition to that other water right that we haven't put to use yet, so we've gotten framework, uh, uh. You know, ironed out, we've coordinated with Division of Water Resources and Rio Grande Water Conservation District this year, and. Uh, they, we've got a good plan on how things will work, so it's been fun to work on, and I think the city's well set up for the future.
So what next in the water rights world for the city, um? There are a couple details to help implement, uh, and, and operate under the decree, the first one is to finalize a long-term agreement. With the consolidated and Anderson ditch companies. They've, uh, we've had a good relationship with them since twenty twenty one. Since we started operating the substitute water supply plan, they've worked with the city. To help us account for our portion of the Anderson ditch water that we're no longer taking at the headgate, that has an impact on their operations. And we need to account for, uh, water that we leave in the river to meet our return flow obligations, in other words, to replicate. That amount of water that used to flow back to the river after irrigation. Uh, so that's in, in progress right now, uh, the other piece is, is the one-year lease with the, uh, Rio Grande Water Conservation District. That I'll talk about in a moment. Um, and then also beyond, work with them, uh, they're interested in entering into a long-term. Agreement, we've had these one-year leases, the last, this will be the third year, um, we're proposing. I think, you know, we're in discussions with them, uh, right now about kind of what a long-term agreement looks like, so we don't have to keep. Doing it every year, set something up that it can kind of run on, so. Uh, other logistics, um, Jordan's been working, uh, with the state, with the Division of Water Resources. And, uh, the sub-districts to incorporate all of the data that we have. Um, into our water rates, city's water rates accounting. Um, looking ahead, the last two bullet points are more kind of not things we're working on right now, but. Uh, looking ahead to the future, uh, the first is to look at, uh, dry up on what we call a heart parcel, that's the parcel that. The city's Prairie ditch water, I, I mentioned it's a McDonald ditch water right diverted through the prairie. That's where it's being used, that has been used, um, in the past. In order for us to use that in our augmentation plan, we have to demonstrate to the state. That land is no longer being irrigated by that water right, and so. Often that involves a dry-up covenant with the landowner. Um. That's kind of the first piece, but there are other considerations we need to evaluate on that, so that's, that's something, um. We'll be looking at doing in the future, then the other, the last bullet, just as kind of an FYI, the city does still have. A few, uh, unch- unchanged ditch rights in other ditches. Um, they actually have a little bit of Anderson ditch water that we did not change. Um, and then there are rights in at least two or three other ditches. Uh, that were not changed in this case either, for a variety of reasons, um, but, but I think, um. You know, we've talked preliminarily about what the city, how the city might make the best use of those, and I think those discussions will continue. The lease that is in front of you today, um. That we're recommending, uh, council approve, is a one-year lease to the Rio Grande Water Conservation District. Of a hundred and fifty acre feet, uh, that's stored in, in Rio Grande Reservoir, they will pay, uh, two hundred and fifty acre feet for. As I mentioned, this is pretty similar to the, the lease we've had with them the last two years, it's really just. Another year of the same kind of deal. The one piece that's a little different is, um. We are also providing to them, uh, eight point oh three acre feet of water. That is intended to cover our depletions from our unconfined wells, this includes the Chapman Park well. And then spare you the details, but the reason we're doing that is that the sub-district can account for that. In a simpler way that's verbal to the state and to us, it simplifies Rob's life here. Um, and so there's no money changing hands, uh. We're essentially putting the water in their account, they will make our replacements for us. Um, and it saves us the, the accounting trouble doing that. So that's just a, a little kind of side piece I wanted to, to point out, but the, the need of it is this. A hundred and fifty acre feet, uh, of water, and I think that's comparable to what we've done in the last, this past year was a hundred and. Hundred and sixty acre feet, so a little less. Um, but pretty simple. That's, I, I know that's a lot, uh, but I'm ha- we're happy to take any questions either about the decree or about, uh, this lease or, or any. Anything else water for me?
Well, they determined, I, knowing, we sold the Anderson ditch water to you guys. Or to the city rather, we had not determined how many acre feet that was going to be quantified at. Do you know that for years yet?
A hundred and sixty roughly. Per year. Hundred and sixty acre feet.
That whole, I think it was two cubic feet per second, is that right? Of Anderson, and that only turned out to be a hundred and fifty acre feet.
Actually, the three point two three, so. Well, just sixty. Of consumptive use. So that's not the, that's not the amount being diverted from the river, much more is diverted from the owners.
I was wondering what it quantified for, we could, we did not know that. When we sold it to the city, and we've been waiting all these years to find out if it came out to what we had expected or not. And evidently, it didn't.
I will double check what the original estimate was, I don't recall it off the top of my head.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll look to you for the lawyers, cause you're very like the water guy, so. You, they got it through water court, that's. Only nine years, so. You guys did good.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Really appreciate you guys taking time to come down.
No problem.
Enlighten us, request. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you both.
Punctuality update, Armando Ross. Thank you, thank you for having me here. Uh, I met some of you guys, I'm Armando Ross, uh, Rio Grande County Weed District Supervisor. I am running with the Board of Seven. Along with my, uh, VOCC. Rio Grande County, um. On. Four sixteen and twenty five, the Rio Grande County Board, county commissioners, voted unanimously to vote, um, punctuality, go heads. Thorn. Um, no good plant, a lot of the words you used, I can't say here, um, uh, from a list C weed to a list B weed. What this means is you have to control it before seed stage, we're trying to stop the spread of seeds. Versus having a, just a weed management plan. Uh, I did go to Patty York, the state supervisor for the, um, agricultural, Department of Agriculture. Uh, she located, um, now the weed management plan is, um, the county lawyer's desk waiting to get signed. Um, it is effective immediately, um, we're not picking on Montevista, we're picking on all four towns. And it has all its, uh, residents. Is it gonna be cured? No. It's pretty invasive plant. It's pretty invasive plant, but we could, we could control it very easily if we work together as a community. Um much as weeds are, it is a law, we are all trying to. Control them all as best we can. I know these budgets got hurt, but we still gotta control it. It's still the law. I've had a lot of support versus backlash on this. I'm a little surprised. Um a lot of baseball moms and soccer moms and coaches and a lot of walking trails and dogs will be happy with this. Um I'm really surprised on the support of them behind this. It's pretty, pretty nice, actually.
Not a soul on the planet likes it.
Um, R- Rio Grande County is leading the way in many ways, you know, just we control, I'm really proud of. Um sometimes a little aggressive, a little hyper sometimes, but I'm pretty proud of the things we're accomplishing. On such a small budget, but being the community behind us now, it's really cool. The ball's starting to roll in our favor. Let's get, let's get it cleaned up and take our counties. Right? Um. I'm here to help. Um we cleaned up the softball fields once, it was a one time deal. Yeah, and I worked on our heads and it cleaned up one time deal worked. Um it's really easy to control, it's not hard. Uh Rio Grande County has the Moore Foundation's greatest with the. Mega roller to help pick up the go heads, it's a pull behind a banana folder. It picks up a lot real fast. Um Missy, that was awesome, but I feel, uh we also have a push, just one we could push, release. Um we're here to help if we can. We cleaned up the middle school go heads, we cleaned up the Stellars baseball fields. We're doing our best with only six people. We need more people to get into it. And this is one way our, my board and the Rio Grande County Commissioners have seen fit to do it.
What's a lease on those?
Uh big one is two hundred dollars a day, but I'm pretty sure we could help something out with the city one of this, so we, that working as community effort, I'm pretty sure we could do something. And just you pull it down and throw it over there and it's pretty big.
What's a web fourteen?
So it's eight feet, I believe.
Eight?
And it goes about twelve feet long.
What about push one?
Uh push one's about eighteen inches wide. We also came to the town center, we picked on town center, they had planned the whole baseball field one hundred percent. Please go look at that for a little tour. Their baseball fields are weed free, the whole field is. Uh we're working on the right of ways now. They are, they're working hard. Down north, we clean up baseball field there, we clean up baseball sphere here, the middle school, the high school. It's real simple, we just get it as a team, get a good plan, and we all do our own part. One person fits Smith's, then everybody bells again.
Are the push ones rented out pretty quickly or?
Uh depends on the weeks. Uh when we get hot, next week is nothing. Um with first one, your cleanup was going on, um great, that's great, that. What is it, twelve inches of snow came or twelve inches of, three inches of the water came, those those seeds were buried. I mean, they're driven even. Here, we're not here to gun, but that last snowball. Give it about two more weeks when the soil temperature is just right. Um we were trying to get right of ways parts and we're future, we're recongrating, mostly we're. Dog paws and bike tires are okay again. For now, we're trying to be educational. I put a lot of thought and work on this matter. I didn't want to be too aggressive at the same time. Stand on business. Um my board is pretty strict on weeds. I have nothing new with them, they're they're out there watching and my commissioners are behind them. Any questions or comments? We have the trainer new weeks there, he's been in all the classes and trainings, so hopefully he does a good job. I'd help, I hope you had calibrated the new, are you guys machine again? It's calibrated and almost ready to go. Yeah, I've been trying to help as much as I can to get everything going in a positive manner so we all get this going. Thank you guys for your support and help helping out this deal. And the last one calls from those mean moms would be helpful to me. Thank you, guys.
Always talking about getting out.
Um. Um there was a last one that. They want to make sure that we don't take these dollars away. That's, that's.
The resolution, do you guys have questions first?
Which one?
Uh twenty five ten. You're authorizing the sale of real estate located within Sky High, Sky High Park complex. That was in your original packet.
So DJ, do you want to go just give a little bit of background and how we got here at this point?
Absolutely. Um I know you guys got a few emails over this last week, um addressing some concerns. So um just kind of recap, in twenty twenty three, the incentive agreement went through, went through a work session with all of you guys. Except for Council Watson, um and then uh you guys passed that in December, uh the December seventh of twenty twenty three. Um and some of the confusion came when they were doing their final due diligence, their copy that they had didn't match ours. Their lawyer sent a revision the day we, you guys approved the the resolution. They sent a revision that added a paragraph. Um and so after some discussion with uh Cobblestone and their their attorneys, they withdrawn that that addition, so it's back to the original one. That you guys approved. Um it can only be assigned one time to the developer group. Uh so it can only be assigned to uh one time without an agreement. From the city, after that, if for some reason they had to transfer it again or they wanted to transfer it again, there was another, they want to get bought out or anything like that in the first ten years. It has to come to the city and must be approved by the city council at that time. Uh so it can only be assigned one time from Cobblestone to the development group, which is the Mana Vista Colorado Hotel LLC. Is their code. Um so the incentive agreement, other than that, is just like it was uh back in twenty twenty three, there was no revisions to it. Um so that that was a revision on that, and I honestly, I don't know why we didn't sign it in twenty twenty three. Uh when we approved the resolution, it probably should have been, except for it did take so long to get all of the investors online and get all of the funding and stuff lined up. That we would have had to amend it because of the 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 start date within twelve months. Um so now they're ready to, they're trying to push and break around before June starts. Um that's their hope and desire. Um they're getting third party reviews for their building permits, um and their site review will be done by myself. Um and they've submitted all the things that they need to to get that worked on. Uh so looking at the purchase sale agreements, um there have not been any changes to that since you guys seen it last time. All of the requirements prior to the closing date have been met to the satisfaction of the city staff. And and or the buyer, which most of them were for the buyer. Uh but all of those have been met and agreed upon. Um I did speak with Tim today and I verified that they did submit for their third party review, which is the only one I had outstanding. Um but they're, they're good to go with all of that. So all of our requirements prior to closing have now been met. The title commitment is clean. Um so that that's done and everything is ready to go as far as the purchase and sale agreements. Um there was a few questions um that came up on that. Uh there was a concern that the. Alpine, which is going to be the title company, would hold on to the three hundred thousand dollars. And after a discussion with Alpine, on closing date, we'll get the three hundred thousand dollars. There's not going to be anything held, uh minus. Probably closing costs, which we do agree to split inside the sale of it. Um. What was it? Oh, then there's a weird paragraph, number twenty three. Um which basically states that it has to be signed on the same days as, the same day the mayor signs it is the same day that they have to sign it so it's accepted. Um and the reason for that is, it's just like when you offer to buy a house, you say, hey, I'm going to pay you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for your house. You have. Seven days to accept the deal. It's kind of the same thing. This is a sale of land, it's the same. The only difference is it goes to a council, right? And so just a person. Um and then they'll, I think the last concern that I seen uh today from uh or yesterday from the city attorney was. There's a statement in there about this agreement is the whole agreement, um and you know, it could nullify other agreements. Two agreements we're doing, ones for incentives, ones for the purchase of land. If they dealt with the same thing, I could see where we could have some confusion. However, there's no overlapping language, there's no overlapping items, so I don't see where the those should conflict. Um and that was also agreed upon by um Brian Mark, they didn't see where any of those two conflicted. Did I miss any notes?
Hey. Um, were you directing it to me?
No, I was asking.
You can dir- direct it to Gene.
Did I miss any? Hopefully it all works out just like everybody else.
Um do you guys have any questions on the agreements and easements and stuff that are all attached to this? You guys have seen it multiple times, but I want to make sure that you guys don't have any lingering questions.
And Tim is on the line if you guys have questions from the Brian Mark representative. Um Sarah, you need the unmuting, please?
Hello?
We can hear you, Tim.
All right. Appreciate everybody uh taking the time to review these final things here, so we can hopefully move towards. Uh collecting signatures on these documents and move to close the land uh within the next uh week or two.
And I just want to say. Um. Thank you DJ and and Gene for their help. I was going to give a presentation, but I've got a terrible headache at the moment. Um but we are very excited about this project and the investors that have. Um work so hard to get us to this point. And so I hope council is as excited to be adding a four story sixty two room hotel. Uh Sarah, there's a couple pictures you can show of the hotel of what it's going to look like. So this is, this is the top of the Cobblestone line, and it's called their Main Street Edition. And so it'll have a beautiful front facade, that angle will be facing. Sky High Event Complex and the um. All right, one moment. And the backside. We put the backside to the street so that hopefully that. Mitigates a lot of the shining of the lights on the neighborhood. And the back, is there another picture? So it'll have a beautiful outdoor patio. It'll have a fire pit, it will um. They'll have some sort of alcoholic beverages that can be served. I don't know if the investors have decided to go with a full blown bar. Or just serving beer and wine. And and, excuse me, it'll be open to the public. Um those staying will be able to have a nice hot breakfast and. Um Tim, let me ask you, because I don't remember how many suites will will there be?
There should be. Uh from memory, there should be nine two room extended stay suites. So you'd have a full kitchen set up when you walk in, your living room arrangement, and then a private bedroom off to the side. So two full rooms, uh obviously, and then a bathroom as well. But there should be nine of those two room extended stay suites. Uh those can sleep up to four guests, uh the king bed, obviously, in the bedroom. And then a pullout sleeper sofa, a queen size sleeper sofa in the living room area. And then. There will also be a number of studio suites. And in those studio suites, some of them will be able to uh be able to handle up to the six guests in a studio suite. So when you have families that come, um you know, maybe a family of of six, they don't have to rent two rooms. Uh for their family to stay together. So there's a real good mix of uh extended study suites, studio suites, and then your typical queen queen. Where there's two queen beds in the room and then king beds as well.
And the patio will be on the southern side of the building. So the fireplace and all that will be on the Sherman side.
But you can tell from these pictures how lovely this is going to look and. Be nice.
Where's the swimming pool?
Oh, yes, and it'll have a swimming pool.
See, yeah, there's, um I don't, I don't think uh you have a picture of the, it's an indoor pool.
There we go, that's the five ten.
Um. Two cent.
And. And they're thinking about, I believe, you guys are thinking about having um, a lot of the pictures will. Reflect stampede and our agricultural heritage and. Just that whole history, maybe more of the historical side of of what Mana Vista is.
So that is, that is one of the big things with the Main Street is Cobblestone will actually have. Uh one of their team members working with someone at the city to pull together historically significant photographs from the community. And instead of just having nonsense artwork in in the lobby and in the guest rooms and the public spaces. It'll all be historic photographs. In fact, in the lobby, they'll do a floor to ceiling, a full wall mural. So they'll take one very significant historical photograph. And they will um actually turn it into wallpaper and they'll, they'll do the entire wall. So one of, one of the great things is, you know, there's, this is a history rich community. And it just really helps tie the property to the community. And people that are coming to Mana Vista are coming because they enjoy the, the history and everything that it has to offer. And so we really like to tie that uh to the hotel itself.
Okay, cool. So if there's no more questions, then are you guys good with me reading the resolution?
Yeah, sorry.
Resolution number twenty twenty five ten, resolution of the Mana Vista City Councils, authorizing the sale of real estate located within. Sky High Park Complex. Whereas the Mana Vista city staff has received and negotiated contract of purchase and sale. Of attractive land designated as tract two and containing approximately two point five four acres. Located in the southwest portion of the Sky High Park Complex on the southeast side of the city. Designated as track two on exhibit A, attached to this resolution and incorporated. Herein by reference and, whereas the proposed sale attracts to Cobblestone Hotel Development LLC in the amount of three hundred thousand. Has been verified as adequate, as an adequate sales price by a qualified appraiser, Monty G Mullins, MIA, SRA. In his appraisal report and recently updated as of April eleventh, twenty twenty five. Attached here to as exhibit B and, whereas the proposed contract attached as exhibit C. Has a number of contingencies which must be fulfilled by the buyers to the buyer's satisfaction in order to close the contract and. Whereas the city of Mana Vista, as a home rule city, is entitled to determine. The applicable rules and code provisions governing the sale of city property as a matter of local concern and. Whereas section two dash eight dash fifty of the Mana Vista Municipal Code states that any sale of. City real estate shall occur only after a public hearing. And at or above its appraised value, both of which have now been established and completed. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the city council of the city of Mana Vista. That the mayor and or city managers authorize to execute the contract attached as exhibit C. Between the city of Mana Vista and Cobblestone Hotel Development LLC. And to thereafter close the contract and execute a warranty deed to the buyer upon the completion of the terms listed in said contract. Done and signed this fifteenth day of May, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion to approve resolution in twenty twenty five dash ten, resolution on this. Mana City Council authorizing the sale of real estate. Montevista City Council authorizing the sale of real estate located within Sky High Park Complex.
Then moved in second and approved resolution two zero two-five dash ten. Resolution authorizing the sale of real estate located within Sky High Park Complex. Is there any discussion?
As J one, right?
Yeah, J four.
Sarah?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Ren?
Yes.
Counselor Watson? Mayor Pro Tim Singla?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to pass. J one, resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash one zero, a resolution authorizing the sale of real estate located within Sky Hard Park Complex.
Now you're going J two, which one was J two?
Um, so. J two is um, motion carries to purchase sale agreements and sell agreement. I believe, yeah, okay.
So J two would be to sign the agreement. That should have been in J.
Development agreement.
And the economic development and economic agreement. And then J three, the easement agreement for ingress and egress.
So then the incentive agreement. I don't think there's any more suggestion needed on that one. Love a motion to pass that so we can sign for.
The reservation number to that one?
Nope, it's just, it's already been passed twenty, twenty twenty-three sixteen. It was passed by resolution, but it was not executed.
So do you need a motion to execute it?
I think so, just because it was sold. Um, cause it was approved, I mean, almost two years ago now.
Uh, make a motion to authorize the execution of the economic development incentive agreement. Uh, between City of Montevista and Cobblestone Hotel Development LLC.
Second.
Then moved in second.
I think there's a correction there. Councilman Howard, because, or maybe Tim will say that this economic agreement is actually between. The Montevista Colorado, the corporation, not with cobblestone.
No, no, that's not correct, Gigi.
It is between, this says cobblestone.
Yeah, this calls, and then they can assign it forward.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Uh, Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Ren?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Singla?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Ayes.
Motion carries to approve. Economic development incentive agreement.
And J two, right? That was J two. J three.
Now, uh, J, J three is actually with the Montevista or the NBCO Hotel LLC. Um, as they will become, they're the ones that will actually be closing and purchasing the land. And so that they'll be the one that uh we're signing this agreement with. So this motion would be to enter an agreement with the NBCO Hotel LLC. Into an, into an, into an easement agreement with the Montevista Hotel LLC for ingress and egress of the Clearview Extension. Thank you.
Been moved in seconded. To approve the agreement. The easement agreement for in ingress and egress. With NBCO Hotel LLC, the Colorado Limited Liability Company in the city of Montevista. Is there any more discussion? Sarah?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Ren?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Singla?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
This is where the easement agreement comes in, so motion carries to approve easement agreement. That we're at for ingress and egress. I need a lot of practice with this stuff. Much trials ahead.
Thank you, DJ. You GG, thank you, Jean, for all your work on this.
Yeah, this is a big project. Thank you. All right, uh, grants, present the grant agreement with Federal Highway Administration for Safe Streets for all grandchildren. Cannot leave yet. Please, you cannot leave.
Yes, you can.
Thank you, Sheriff.
DJ, I almost had that.
The trend continues. Okay, so the Safe Streets for All Grants, which is, we've discussed multiple times, we were awarded it a very long time ago. Um, and then when they shut down the grants, they shut down the agreement. And even though we were almost done with it, they shut it down. Well, they finally gave it back to us. Um, and they want uh us to go ahead and sign the agreement and whatnot to go forward. So this is the grant agreement, um, so that we can spend a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of that money. And then some mankind time from ours to develop an action plan that will create. Um, priorities and it will assist us in further grant development. So at the end, we should come up with our prioritized um intersections and sidewalks. Uh, places where we may or may not need additional signage and that kind of stuff. As well as it will purchase a speed trailer, um such as what we tend to borrow from Rio Grande County. Um, so we'll have that in a traffic counter that this will also purchase, um and we'll be able to keep that forever. We're not giving that back. Um, and so that will allow us to conduct traffic studies and other things that will again help us with. Uh, grant writing as well as uh, we're gonna place it specifically on Newcombe uh to. When I wrote the grant, we hadn't yet put in the stop sign. Um, yeah, on Newcombe, so the original study was to put traffic calming on Newcombe. So we're gonna paint some stripes, we're gonna narrow the road, we're gonna put in a bike lane, um actually delineate the off-street parking. Um, and then we'll do the traffic studies to see if that again impacts the thing. And then we'll also put in some verbiage about how we actually put in a stop sign between two years ago when I wrote the grant and when they could actually execute on it. But we'll purchase a, a ton of equipment, some paint, and um also it'll provide that. Report that we'll then use to write for another Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant. Where we can uh do some art structure stuff. So this is all demonstration, so it's paint and plastic delineators and studies, basically. So. Any questions about the grant or the agreement?
You signed it.
Me.
Okay.
Um, and that's, and that was done through the, the granting process. They needed somebody that could sign off on it. So I guess I would need a motion to allow me to sign off on this grant once it's finally approved by department or the Federal Highway Administration. Um, and then uh. That's all I need.
I don't know how to say it, so moved and then. That's hard, but how do I state that?
Um, so.
So I said, present grant agreement, federal highway administration, so that you can sign it?
Yeah, yes, giving DJ the authority to sign it.
I make a motion to give DJ the authority to sign the, the grant agreement with the Federal Highway Administration for Safe Streets for all grant award. Second. Been moved in seconded. To prove DJ to. Sign the grant agreement with the Federal Highway Administration for Safe Streets for All Grant Award. Got that, Sarah?
Um, yeah, and. Okay, Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Ren?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Singla?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve grant agreement with the Federal Highway Administration for Safe Streets for All Grant Award.
Thank you, DJ. All right, well, our staff proposes reports and actions. Start with recreation.
We don't have anything. We uh, we're right along, we just finished up with our adult sports last night. Um, with the uh, with the women's league. And also finished up the soccer on the park. It's been parked the last five weeks, it's been packed. Um, and now we're moving on to baseball, softball, and uh all of our T-ball. Uh, for the entire valley is gonna be played over at Chapman Park, so we'll have a packed park again. Some um trucks out there selling food and that, so that's all for recreation.
Uh, Durvin? Why don't you um give them a little bit of an update on the baseball field project? Kind of where, where we're at at this point.
Okay, so with the baseball field project, um. We are at the point now to where we've hired a grant writer uh to help us out, right, with some grants for that. We meet the first Tuesday of every month out at Sky High with the school district, um DJ, myself. And I just go over it, think updates and whatnot. So basically, right now, a lot of us are just looking for grants. That we can apply for, um, for the baseball complex. It's gonna be a really nice complex, um, two fields, two uh afterturf fields out there. So we're losing the fields over here on the twentieth of um, of June and that, so hopefully. Soon we'll have new fields out at the uh middle school. Uh, altar fields that will have adult sports, um be able to do adult sports, so we will definitely pack the hotel. Um, you know, multiple weekends during the summer. With different tournaments, um, we've been asked to host a lot of tournaments, right now we just don't have the bills to do that. So, you have anything to add, DJ? Oh, DJ left me. Guess that's payback for everybody leaving here.
Uh, I have a question, cause I've had phone calls from other community. Or other schools in the area, like in regards to what's gonna be done, like the fencing. Or lights or whatever.
So, we are gonna be, we're using a lot of that fencing for Public Works Building. And so we extended the. The fence out there at Sky High a little bit. To the east. And so most of it's gonna get used, but I did speak to Rob about it, and so anything that we've got left, we can certainly share with. Another school.
And the lights, I don't think have been designated for anything yet, um as far as our lights go that are out there right now. Um, except for they may use them uh for the RV park and whatnot, I'm not sure. What's gonna happen with those, uh, the fencing though, we are using over Public Works, a lot of that fencing that's out there now. And we are starting to tear down uh the fencing. Um, and I told um, Gigi, I'm gonna be losing lots of baseball, so she volunteered to buy me extra baseballs and that, just to tear the fence down.
I feel like that wasn't the conversation that you brought in here. Seems like someone's awfully surprised by this conversation.
That's kind of like the gravy conversation that never happened either. You keep getting me on that, and I keep forgetting about that. I don't have to write it on my forehead for next meeting, to have Gigi's gravy. So it's exciting though, to, about the bills though, um, you know, we'll have the adult sports, people coming from all over. Um, to participate in the tournaments and whatnot out there, um, youth and adult. And our little baseball tournament that we're currently having, we started off with two teams three years ago, I'm sorry, three teams three years ago. And we wanted to cut it off this year at six. Right now, we have six teams for each division, twelve-niner, fourteen-hundred. And we'll add another division next year, um, and then we have a waiting list as well, so that's. Really exciting, so. And going back to baseball, we uh, we uh bought eighty brand-new baseball jerseys for. Uh, for the uh, baseball. We currently have ninety-two kids registered. So it's a good thing. We have to order some more jerseys. We bought thirty softball, new jerseys. And we currently have like twenty-seven girls registered, so this year we will definitely have the younger kids, not, so it's exciting. Did I miss anything?
No, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you. Appreciate what you do, man.
Thank you. Gravy, next, next time. Kids Connection?
She's coming.
Good evening. So Kids Connection is in crunch time right now. We have two weeks before summer starts. So today was our last after-school day with kiddos. Tomorrow will be our last Friday with kiddos during the school year. And we will be closed next week for staff training. Um, we'll be participating with High Valley Boys and Girls Club and the Center Youth Biking Club, as well as, I believe, PALS. For two days in Del Norte for some staff training, um, just to kick off our summer. Then we'll be back for first aid and CPR training. And then program planning on Thursday of next week. And then the following week on Tuesday will be our first day of the summer program, so we're already there. That's really all I have for program-specific, but I do want to make note that. Um, the SLV Aquatics Board has dissolved their nonprofit. And they made a thousand-dollar donation to Kids Connection to support swimming programs for the summer and the school year. So we are very thankful, and I will send the board a thank you um card for that generous donation to Kids Connection programs. Really.
You want to talk about AmeriCorps?
Sure. Um, so I know Gigi mentioned in the last meeting that there was a little bit of a mess with the stop order. For some um programs across the nation. Our AmeriCorps program was one of them that was um named. But the AmeriCorps program we work with through Alpine Achievers has come up with a fairly good solution for us. We pay a stipend for those AmeriCorps members, um, so we agreed to cover essentially the difference. Um, which is a discounted rate compared to what we would have paid for them to keep them for half of the summer. Um, as long as they're, so worst-case scenario, there is an official stop order, um. Then we will cover a larger portion. If the stop order gets pushed back further, the amount that we pay to cover the cost of their stipend. Gets less and less. If there is no stop order between now and July eleventh, it won't cost us any additional, so. Cross our fingers that we get closer to that July eleventh, um, we actually only planned on having them till July eleventh. Cause that's when their contract um ends. If the stop order does come through, we will lose our full-time um AmeriCorps member that was meant to be with us from January to December. Um, so it leaves us in a little bit of a bind, but. At this point, it is what it is, and we're just gonna keep moving forward, cause I can't stop. Otherwise, nothing happens, so. We're just staying as positive as we possibly can and trying not to cry about it, cause tomorrow's gonna come eh either way. So.
I have a question regarding the donation from San Luis Valley Aquatics.
Yes.
Cause I understand that that is for swim lessons. With kids from Kids Connection.
Yes.
Have you figured out? Can we really do that? Do we have transportation to give kids?
So we have a bus. Um, Kids Connection doesn't own a bus. We don't have a bus driver. Um, we currently don't even have the staff that we need to actually pull off a summer program. Um, we had advertised for summer staffing and we didn't have a lot of luck. We had interviewed, I believe, four, Shannon's not here, four people. Offered positions to three of them, two of them declined, one of them accepted and made it one day after school and quit. So. I'm just trying to stay as positive as possible, because otherwise I can't stop. The program doesn't operate if I stop. So I have to figure out plan B, just to keep going, so we are, like I've, I've said in the past, we're short-staffed. We're literally as bare-bones staff and are barely going to be squeaking by. Um, so I'm a little in panic mode, but. It doesn't look like this. I'm just trying to see the sunshine at the end of everything, so. Um, if you know of anybody that is at least eighteen years of age, I'm trying to. I've had, I've had trouble communicating with our state licensing. So I'm trying to see if there's any way that we can bypass the requirements um of three months of verifiable experience to hire somebody. Because that really is holding us back. Um, there are a lot of other things that hold us back in that aspect, but. Right now, that's the one thing that I can try to control, so I'm trying to get a yes, so that we can at least look at more applications. So if you know anyone that's crazy enough to hang out with kids and not get freaked out by kids, cause kids are dirty, they're gross. They are covered in germs. It's just something you're gonna have to get used to, um. It's not, it's not that bad at the end of the day. It's not, it's not that bad at the end of the day.
You're positive, David. Thank you.
You can't, you can't look at it any other way. That's all I got for you.
Anybody have any questions, or?
Thank you.
We're gonna skip Sky High. Come on, Steph. She sat through DJ's stuff.
We'll start you off with some numbers. Um, so April, we ended the month with sixty-five events. Um, right now we are on track for twenty-nine events in May, um, and we already have twenty-five events for June. Which puts you, puts us at three hundred and fifty-seven events for twenty-twenty-five, so. We are just continuously booking. I literally just got an email five minutes ago confirming another wedding, so we just keep on going. Um, this weekend jumps us into full-on summer. Um, so we start with graduations, weddings, quinces, and rodeos, um, so we literally have something every single weekend from now until. September. So if you're ever bored, come on by. We're at Sky High all the time. Um, we are having our last dance lesson for the season this Sunday, May eighteenth. Um, our instructors are getting a little tired, so that twice a month thing got to be a little much for them, so we're gonna take a little break over the summer. So they can um, continue doing other things in their lives. Um, but we had a great turnout, um, we had at least thirty for every single dance lesson. Um, so we're looking forward to keeping it going when they get a little more time back in their schedule. Um, but with that, we have decided to reward. Um, the participants in our dance lessons as well as the rest of the community, and we will be hosting a dance on June sixth. Um, we have the Buckshot Band booked to come play for us. Um, we have the Alps Club doing a bar for us, um, and we're hoping to get a couple of food trucks out there, so. Mark your calendars, June sixth, come out to Sky High for a dance and a little good time. Um, other events that we have going on. Last weekend officially started our rodeo season, um, so they did a double header with Spring in the Valley, um, on Saturday and Sunday. And they have two more coming up on May thirty-first and June first, um, so they did double headers this year as opposed to single Saturdays throughout the month. So. Yeah, other than that, we're just lots, lots of events.
You get the arena lights in?
Arena lights, um, we gave them a small extension on getting those done, so originally our deadline for them to get those installed was June ninth. They ran into some shipping issues, um, and asked for an extension. They asked for two weeks. We gave them a week. Um, which still gives me a little bit of a buffer and wiggle room. Um, we have a ranch rodeo, June twenty-first and twenty-second, I believe. Um, so that gives me a little bit of wiggle room to have them in by the seventeenth. To make sure that we have the arena ready for that ranch rodeo, um, but still in plenty of time for Sampead. Not yet, but we're working on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Everybody?
Thank you.
Been letting her off too easy. Thank you, Stephanie. Planning?
You said, I know you both could walk away, but it's not fun. So, uh, the last couple of weeks have been, uh, doing the things that we've talked about so far this evening. Um, as well as, I'm re-engaging on a few new grants. Um, we were asked to apply for a couple more, so I'm doing those grants, trying to get those turned in. Um, and then working on some revisions to the nuisance code and dangerous building codes still. Um, and then working with Gina on, uh. An agreement with the Education Foundation, so part of the Sky High and all those things. Um, we're working on moving the baseball fields out to the middle school. And some grants are good for the city, some grants are good for the school district, and some grants are good for five oh one C threes. Um, so we're gonna work with the Montavista Education Foundation, um, to use their five oh one C three to help finish that project out, so. Uh, working on that. Hopefully I have that for you guys next time. Uh, I gotta get with school count or the s-. School board and make sure that they don't have any uh, changes to the agreement. So we just got that today, so we'll be moving forward with that. Um, and quite a few other, you know, we're still working on the land development code or the land use development code and all those things. Uh, so. Uh, the only thing that I was going to provide, and I just honestly ran out of time, is I was gonna give you guys a Placer AI review of. The Cinco de Mayo. Placer AI is the AI that I use for that analysis of who's in town and who's not and how long they stay for. Um, I can tell you that this year's Cinco de Mayo, despite having a very short planning period for a group of people who are learning on the fly. Had approximately a thousand more people than last year. Um, so they had a very good turnout. Um, we had almost two thousand more people that were in our downtown over that timeline, uh, that they were here. Um, so we had just over a thousand that were actually in the corridor of where it was, but two thousand that stayed more than ten minutes in our downtown. Um, over that, that one day. Uh, two thousand more than last year.
That's really good, considering you held it on the wrong day.
Hey. I was not a part of that at all, except for I said, hey, you two should talk. Um, but I'll try to get for my action, I'll try to get you guys those numbers. I'm trying, uh, to make sure that you guys. Can see what those different organizations and what those things do for the city, um, cause it is important to see the economic impact of those events. Um, and how, how positive they are in the community, so I've heard nothing bad about that. So, um, a bunch of new restaurants coming in town, we've got land turning over, ownerships for remodels. Um, and new businesses opening up, so it's an exciting time as far as community development goes, I'm. Talking about a developer a week. Some of them are small, like I wanna do a single business. Some of them are large, like I'd like to put in seventeen tiny homes on a little tract of land. Um, so it's a good time to be doing development on Vista for some reason, and I'm excited about it. Questions, guys? No, thank you.
Thank you, DJ. City Attorney?
Well, I had on a few don't mind, cause I'm there with dermatologist today. Okay. Uh, unicorns next week, uh, looks like fifty-eight cases on the docket. Um, so that's a lot to go. Quite a little while, um. We concluded the Tim's contract between the PD and Dr. Hurley. Uh, yesterday, um, this is for medical services. Oversight when the PD acts as first responders. Um. And you have injuries that have to be handled by the first responders. So that went well, um, year-to-year contract, um. And it has a separate MOU with the ambulance uh, service also. And so we've concluded that, and all we have to do is, uh, put that before you and get it, uh. Get it finalized and signed, but, uh, Dr. Hurley was satisfied with provisions, been working with Josh Hill on that. Um, so that's, uh, that's pretty much a done deal now. Um, we drafted a, uh. Fairly comprehensive food truck ordinance. Um. It, uh, covers food trucks on private property as well as public property. Uh, and while this was going on too, we've got this house bill going through, which is. Uh, twenty-five dash, uh, nineteen twenty-five relating to food trucks. Uh, last time I checked today, it, it, uh, passed the House and Senate, was waiting the governor's signature. Even though I think it's been, um, proposed by CML. And it seems to have some strange reciprocity provisions in there, that if the trucks have been licensed, uh. You know, in Denver, uh, then they have to be licensed to know the communities and so forth, so. That's gonna end up, but, uh, anyhow, uh. There's a lot of things about, uh, the concentration of food trucks and where and how close and. Propane and that type of thing. We have them both, uh, downtown. We have them in, uh, Fullwater Park, and then we have them in private property too, so. So we've been working on that, uh, particular ordinance. Um. I finished, uh, the MOU between the city and the Montavista Education Foundation. Um. To have the Education Foundation act as a pass-through agent, uh, for recreation grants. Uh, namely the baseball fields out there at, uh, the middle school, uh, moving the, those from Sky High Park. Uh, and, uh, got a lot of information from Gary Wilkinson on that, uh. And, uh, the, uh. Basically, the, uh, we would be doing the work from the city and the Education Foundation would be the agency, because. Some of these grants can only be given to a five oh one C three organization rather than the government. And it would act as pass-through agent on that. Um. Working on opinion for, uh, DJ on, uh, the area just east of Solar. Avenue out there, um. Uh, concerning the, uh. Right-of-way for the legacy residents, uh, who face to the south, and I think there's some. Uh, plans in the mill about, uh, an apartment building that would go just south of that, uh. Particular right-of-way and how that would be handled by. Ambulance service, uh, the, uh, fire trucks, uh, this kind of thing. Uh, and it, uh, looked to me like it might need some replating out there to accommodate all of that, so. Uh, I did finish the draft of that today on, uh. The, uh, solar court, I guess we'd call it. Um. I provided the council with memorandum concerning the status of the purchase and sale contract, uh, which is self-explanatory. And I likewise hope that everything goes well with that. Um. He, and I've, uh. Reviewed the and approved the drug and alcohol policy that Shannon provided, uh. As a, um, final new policy. And that's what I've been working on and, uh, kind of a laundry list of other things that still. Are in the mill for the city. Any questions?
City manager report.
Okay, I'm gonna be lazy and just stay right here. But just a couple quick things, um, Arbor Day celebration was last week. We planted two trees over in Marsh Park. They brought a bunch of children over and it was, was pretty cute, you know, these kids are. All in for just taking a little shovel of dirt and putting it on top of the tree, so it's good, good engagement. Uh, yesterday. DJ. Andrew. And myself, as well as then I invited Pat Sullivan, our fire chief. And he's also the road and, road and bridge guy for Rio Grande County. And then John Willshaw, who has SLV movers, earth movers, and we went to Salida. Uh. For an invitation through DOLA called Camp Resistance. And it was, was kinda cool, you know, it. It's, I'm sorry, Camp Resilience. It's not Resistance, Resilience. And they, um. It was kind of my motive in taking. To outsiders is because, you know, we use, we work with these people when we're, when there's an emergency. And so trying to help build that relationship on how we can collaborate on other issues that may come up. And be more on the proactive side than always having to be on the reactive side. So I think for John, he's probably never been a part of anything like that, and I think Pat. Enjoyed it as well, and so we, um. You know. Did their little presentations and, and interactions between us, so that was positive. The CML meeting, spring meeting, if any of you still wanna go, it's Tuesday in San Luis. So we'd have to leave here around four o'clock-ish or a little after, so. I'll be covering it, so you don't have to. And, uh, I don't know if you guys have seen in the newspaper, but Erin Minx. With, she's the area representative for Senator Bennett. She's retiring at the end of this month. And I just want. To give her a shout-out. I've really enjoyed working with Erin. We've known each other for a long time, but she. Really does a terrific job in representing rural issues and getting them up. Up the ladder with, with Senator Bennett's office, so. Be a new relationship somewhere that we're gonna have to re-establish. And I think that's it.
Alright, thank you, Gigi. Council Committee, City Commission, and Council reports. Trying, you're really trying to save face now. Trying to save face, just trying not to be dumb.
No, I don't have anything.
Jason? Guys, uh, be sure and hit the flower markets and flower stores and buy flowers to plant in your yards. Cause it's science. So, uh, for that, we will adjourn this meeting until. June fifth, six PM here in Council Chambers. Thank y'all for being here in Monty Strong.